Second hour?
It's not yet.
We're gonna finish rewinding.
Maybe by number of action items.
Holy.
We had some words in the mic. But the time.
Yes.
Seven, we can.
You taking any time off?
All right, Cory.
Doesn't say everybody's using it.
Or you lose it, right?
See you next year.
Yeah. It's a long time. Lucky mine are eleven and thirteen, so they're like ten minutes away, so they're killing each other. Each other I haven't at least get there yet.
Yeah.
Do CPR.
Something would bleed out like.
I'm actually better off. At this point in time with a thirteen year old girl, she just sits in a room the whole time. I don't have to worry about her doing.
That's why our fourteen year old, that's what she does, is supposed to be checking.
No, my eleven year old's more responsible than my thirteen year old. For you girls.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, right now it's just all about friends and folks.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But they just, that's where they live, right?
Oh, I know, I know.
And. I got our data plan from L U.
Should we call him that?
Twenty megabytes of data on our plans. It's all Instagram because they all communicate through Instagram and the.
You ready? I have those. I'll see.
Sergeant Spiegel, can you remove that guy behind you, please? Absolutely bothering me. Like now.
Morning, everyone. I will ask you to please rise if you're able for your open prayer and closing of the meeting before we proceed. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the season of Advent Hanukkah. This year Hanukkah, Hanukkah begins on Christmas for the first time since two thousand and five. And it's only happened five times since nineteen hundred. We ask you to bless our Jewish friends as they celebrate the season of Hanukkah. We pray for the hostages. That they may be released soon to their families. We reflect on the Christmas season full of your love and grace. Praise you for your gift. We know that many have experienced loss and sadness throughout the year. We pray that you'll comfort those, provide peace to them. And we remember your love daily, to share it not only during the season, but throughout the year. We are thankful as we present the final budget for approval today. We provide the means for our county. We pray for your wisdom going forward. And we always make decisions that are in accordance with your will. We pray for our elected officials and department heads. They remain diligent and watchful. As they guide their respective offices. And Lord, as we draw near to the closing of another year. Let us reflect on our faults. Make every effort to correct them. And we praise you for our strengths and victories and be humble in our success. We now ask you for your guidance throughout the meeting. These things we humbly request in your name. Amen. Put your wings just as soon as I, the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in this whole liberty and justice for all. Morning, this time we convene our commissioners' public meeting. We've got quite an agenda to go through, so buckle up.
There's gonna be a ten minute intermission.
Okay, and there'll be a test at the end. Okay, we'll have to approve the minutes of previous meeting.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say. Off your side.
Aye.
Aye. Do we have a public comment on the agenda at this time? Any online Matt?
Um, like coming here, good line, Commissioner.
Morning. Okay, moving on, bid openings. Nikki.
Morning, Commissioners. Um, we have one bid for, um, it is the Williamsport Crosspipe Rehabilitation Project in the city of Williamsport. We received three bids. The first one is Coppola Services, six million, three hundred ninety-five thousand, five hundred thirty-four dollars. Greenland Construction, four million, four hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars. And Shiloh Paving and Excavating, four million, three hundred eleven dollars, oh, three hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred twenty-nine dollars.
Great. Thank you. Danny, you have those? Okay.
Got three bids, that's great.
Okay, so great, yep, that's better than we expected, isn't it?
We'll be through these two, so we got spare.
Good. Okay, good. Okay, thank you. Moving on to, uh, reports.
Okay, presented for your ratification, our invoice is due through December thirty first, twenty twenty-four. To be paid on December eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of three million, four hundred eighty-nine thousand, one hundred seven dollars and sixty-six cents. Out of the general fund, it's about one point five million at forty-two percent. Grant Act thirteen is five thousand dollars, a point one seven percent. Other grants, seven hundred ninety-two thousand, twenty-two point seven percent. RMS is one point one five million at thirty-three percent. And escrow is forty-five thousand at one point.
Okay. Your motion accept the odds available.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
Thank you, Nikki, for being here. I know you're a little under the weather, we appreciate it.
Yeah.
Hope you feel better. Off your side.
Aye.
Aye.
How could she miss such a historic meeting?
All right.
Help by one.
On to information items, Commissioners, I'd like to move. Action, seven point three three. Uh, uh, right after Chris gets done with his point here, of course.
Okay, so, Chris Grant. See you, thank you. Having updates from the White Deer Golf Course.
Uh, good morning, Commissioners. Uh, thank you for your time today. Uh, yeah, here to discuss another tremendously successful year at, uh, at White Deer Golf Course. Uh, had a record-breaking year in all aspects. Sixty-three thousand rounds, which is over twenty percent growth in two years. That's actually really high compared to a lot of our courses in the region. Um, you know, after COVID, obviously, there was a little bit of a boom in golf. But to see that continued success over these last couple of years has been tremendous. Highest total revenue ever for a year at White Deer. And a gain of over a hundred, um, hundred thousand dollars to the bottom line. Uh, this year, which really far exceeds our, our positive performance that we've had for the last, uh, quite a few years. Uh, with the continues for the county and all our guest leagues outings. We've been able to keep self-funding all the improvements at the golf course in all areas. There's also hope this continue in this positive direction. In November, we made our fourth installment of the car payment for fifty-six thousand dollars, so we're now halfway done with that. And today, like to present a check for fifty thousand dollars back to the county. On behalf of White Deer and our success, so. Um.
Glad to do that.
Yeah, I know.
Definitely take.
Uh, which is over a hundred grand then back to the county this year from the golf course. Um, and then, and then lastly, um, we've had nine years of, of partnership with La Coney County, which has been great. I've been here from day one and it's been, uh, really amazing to see the success of where it came from. You know, it was a real concern for the county when we first got here, financially especially. Um, so now the one that continues to be self-sustaining and really an asset to the county and the community. Um, so I know one of the action items is we also like to present a, a management extension. Uh, for a term of five years with La Coney County to, uh, continue further success and keep the partnership going, so. Um, appreciate all your supports. We really couldn't do it without the continued support that you guys have all given us, um, for this time.
Thank you, Chris. And we want to thank everybody who uses the golf course to make it a success. Uh, we know that there's been definitely improvements over there over the years and. And once one, which what once was a money pit. Is now an asset.
Yep.
And it's been turned around and we, we thank you for your management. And overseeing it, all your staff, Justin, thank you. And we look forward to continued success.
Absolutely, thank you.
When I, I don't want to talk too much because we have a long day, but I just, I didn't want to say, you know, it's, you mentioned COVID during the thing and obviously COVID helped. The golf industry, but it's been a while now. The fact that we're still having success is a testament to you guys and what you're doing. We're not riding the COVID wave anymore at the golf course, like we did for a little bit, but. Um, so you guys are doing a great job and we're, we're, we're thankful to have you, we're lucky to have you.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you to everyone who uses the golf course. Right, definitely thank you to the residents that use the golf course, thank you to. Your department, you guys for handling everything you're doing that, that, without spending the, sending it as a negative comment. Um, it just shows that. An outside source running something. Way more efficient than the county ran it for many, many years, so we appreciate you. It, it's putting eyes on it, which you guys have done, fix the problems and turn it around.
Good management can cure a lot of things.
Yeah, absolutely. And like I said, it's been, it's been a lot of fun to be part of. I mean, I know, I was kidded with the past Commissioners, a lot tougher conversations those first few years than we're having now, right? But, uh, um, it's fun to see where it's come from then to now. And, uh, you know, continuing the really tremendous success that we've had, it's, it's great.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
We'd like to get a picture with you, Chuck, yep, and.
Are you, you need to be in the picture, are you taking the picture? Number seven.
I thank you.
Press one now to continue this call in English.
Okay. Down the, uh. Public conference line? Morning, who do we have?
Blockline with Hidacock.
Good morning. Okay. Now, moving on to Maya. We gotta do that now or we?
Action item, some.
Let's do the sorry word first. Wait a minute, we have to do Mr. Hagan, Mr. Hagan first.
Here we go. Good morning.
Morning.
Uh, one information item, uh, for the District Attorney's Office. This is the assignment. A special county detectives as roving DUI patrols, and this is for the period of. January one, twenty twenty-five to December thirty first, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
This time we recess Commissioners' public meeting for sorry board, convening sorry board.
Okay. First item I have is vote to approve the salary board minutes from December twelfth.
Yeah, motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say. Off their side. Aye.
Aye. Um, and do you want me to read these all off the sheriff's office? We have some title changes.
Yeah, please.
No pay grade changes.
Yep.
So it'll be, um, administrative specialist to office manager. Clerk four to administrative specialist supervisor civil process clerk three. Believe this should be clerk four administrative to administrative specialist licensed to carry slash reception, receptionist. Clerk three to administrative specialist real estate. Clerk three to administrative specialist EFA and personal property. Clerk three to administrative specialist warrant control. Part-time clerk three administrative specialist. Part-time clerk three to administrative specialist warrant control LTC.
And I believe this is an effort by the sheriff to. Get rid of the title clerk to make it more specialized in what the. Actual individual doing those duties is actually working on during the day, correct? That be correct? You Spiegel?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And there's no, uh, pay increase in any of it.
Correct.
Just title.
Just title changes.
Okay. All right, do, I have a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
Uh, off their side.
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, thank you.
And then in the sheriff's office, we have add. Clerk three administrative specialist real estate. Pay grade four, this was previously removed in October in anticipation for the twenty twenty-five budget. Agreed at budget meeting with Sheriff Lusk.
Okay, uh, motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
Off their side.
Aye.
Aye.
And then re-add clerk three, um, administrative specialist licensed to carry slash receptionist listed above. That had been removed from the TDA and the cleanup on ten thirty-one twenty-four. And this was removed, removed in error due to a clerical error. In January of twenty twenty-four.
Okay, motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
Off her side.
Aye.
Aye.
In the public defender's office, um. This would be add a second deputy public defender. Uh, eighty-five thousand dollars starting salary to be increased to ninety thousand dollars after the death penalty case certification is earned.
Okay, uh, motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
A question for Nikki, do we have to come back and, um. Increase that after the death certi, death penalty certificates obtained?
Yes, we'll increase it to ninety thousand then.
Well, we'll have a motion at that.
Yes, we'll have to have a motion at that.
Great, thank you. All fair beside.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
And then also in the public defender's office, add a clerk three pay grade four.
Okay, motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
Off their side.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
This time we'll adjourn the salary board, we convene Commissioners' public meeting. Uh. Personal actions.
Mr. Hagan.
Thank you for reading those. I did, I did all those and you gave it to.
Ask her to read them. All right.
We have two action or personal actions?
I have two personal actions, yes, sir. Uh, proven following personal actions as conditional offers of employment subject to the successful completion of background check. No other employment conditions outlined here in attachment A. These are both in the public defender's office. Uh, Cody Engelhardt will be moving to the administrative assistant slash paralegal in training. Pay grade six, full-time, uh, seventeen dollars, point six nine, five, four cents per hour. Seventy-five hours per pay period, anticipated transfer date December twenty-second. And also in the public defender's office, Riley Schaefer, clerk three, pay grade four, full-time. Uh, seventeen dollars, uh, point zero six nine, six cents per hour. Seventy-five hours per pay period with an anticipated start date December twenty-third, twenty twenty-four.
Motion accept, first actions.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
Any questions or comments?
Then you said, you said sixteen dollars, right? For the last one, it says sixteen point oh six.
Sixteen point zero six nine six.
Okay.
What did I get?
I know I said seventy.
Sixty-two dollars?
Off their side.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to action items, Maya. Um, we're gonna move seven point. So, seven point three nine top pay order.
Sorry.
Sorry. Let me get myself in order here. A long agenda.
Any, what are we going to, where are you at?
We're gonna go to seven point three six.
Seven point three six, okay.
I'll move all my items then up to.
Yep, vote to approve in the two thousand, not the top of the budget.
Yes. So we're finally here. So it's my pleasure to formally present La Coney County's twenty twenty-five adopted budget, um, which is a no tax increase budget. Uh, the budget I present today prioritizes our essential services. Um, and infrastructure needs maintains the overall high quality services that are community values. And promotes fiscal responsibility and fiscal conservativeness. Um, although we still have much to do to get to a structurally balanced budget, we have recognized and addressed many budget issues this budget cycle. Uh, as previously stated, raising taxes will be the last resort until all financial due diligence is done. I feel strongly as well with, with the Commissioners. That we have better solutions and better ways to improve rather than to increase taxes. This means we will continue to be prudent in the upcoming budget year. We will continue to examine expenses with a critical eye. And we will begin to implement long-term integrated financial planning inclusive of budget reductions, strategies, forecasting and strategic planning. With this mindset and process, I feel confident the county will continue to move financially forward. And make great strides in improving our budget process and long-term budget outlook. The budget has been on display now for over twenty days and financial management has worked hard during that time with departments and the Commissioners to make further adjustments to the budget. As a result of these efforts, these adjustments bring the total twenty-five budget to a hundred twenty-eight million, seven hundred and six thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. But the total operating budget being a hundred and eighteen million, hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars. And the capital budget being ten, um, million, five hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars. This is a twenty-five percent reduction over the current year calendar budget, which I'm very proud of. Um, at this time, I will ask Heather Lehman, my chief budget officer, to come up and to highlight these budget revisions.
Morning.
Where are you other?
In total, we were able to decrease both revenue and expenses by three million, nine hundred and forty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. Which is a two point nine seven percent change from our original proposed budget. Um, some of the highlights from the revenue side is the general fund revenue was reduced by one point four million. Since the county intends to pursue a ten million dollar bond in twenty twenty-five, um, to fund several of our capital projects. Because of this, we are able to cut our fund balance usage by eleven point four million. Also, on the enterprise fund revenue side, we were able to reduce their revenue by two point five million. As a result that they will no longer need to use their reserve capital funds to fund their capital fund projects. And then on the expenditure side, we cut, um, from capital and inventory expenses, we reduced. Four point nine million, um, of projects since most of them were either deferred or removed entirely from the budget. Of the four point nine million, two million was on the general fund side and two point nine million was on the enterprise fund side. We also had reductions. In the amount of one million dollars from the Commissioners' contingency fund. As well as removing two hundred and fifty thousand from their Commissioners' initiative account altogether. Now, with the expenditure side, we did have some increases and they were, um, we increased the district attorney's salary by seven thousand, four hundred and eighteen. To reflect the new compensation that he will receive in twenty twenty-five. Uh, that is all published by the Administrative Office of the Pennsylvania Courts. Which was announced on November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. Additional cuts, or sorry, additional expenses we added was one point two million for the visitor's borough to reflect the hotel tax. Uh, that will be of no cost to the county since that's the hotel tax revenue that comes in and that will go out to them. And we also added a hundred thousand for the River Valley Transit Authority. For our local share contribution, uh, for bus services to our Lysoc View Complex.
And so just, you know, wanted to note again, um. This was our first as a team, um, first budget year, I'm super proud of it. Um, it was a tough budget year for sure. I think for all of us, even for some of the new Commissioners as well, it was a, a huge learning curve. Um, I just want to thank, um, of course, my incredible staff, they were, you know, so great through this whole process. Um, very dedicated, um, their hard work and commit are really the backbone of my success and our success as a whole. Um. Truly grateful for each and every department head. Um, again, they worked tirelessly to help reduce the budget numbers as well. So a very, um, big thank you goes out to them as well. And then, of course, a big thank you to the Commissioners, um. Such a great group of Board of Commissioners for me personally. Um, commitment, support is like no other. Can't say thank you enough for that.
Thank you, Maya. Any comments? Um, I, I would make a comment, you know, I agree with Maya, it was very, you know, it was, it was a learning curve for, for Mark and I. Um. It was, it was a new process for everybody within the county. But appreciate the efforts that the entire county staff put together. Everybody understood that, um, the spending had to change. Everybody accepted that and worked with, with Maya's team and, and the Commissioners' team to. Make those adjustments work and, and moving forward, making them work. And, and we're still gonna continue and they're all aware of that as well, that it's through twenty twenty-five, we're gonna look at where else can cuts be made, what else can we do? More efficiently. Just appreciate the entire commitment from La Coney County's staff to be behind. These efforts as opposed to just leaning on a tax increase to balance this budget.
I just kind of wanted to thank the people involved, I know you two are the point people that we deal with, I know. Um. Wanted to thank your staff and, and we do as well, but, um, you know, for the people that we deal with. It's not. Uh. This wasn't a fun process. Um, you know, we're all kind of numbers people, so we kind of like it, but it's hard and telling people that we don't have money and. And that we're gonna have to make cuts and, and making people really tighten up is, is never good news to share, but. Between the people working together. Uh. Uh, we couldn't have a better group, it's been, it's been, I, I appreciate you two, I appreciate you two. Um, and it's, we made it, you guys made a tough process, um. Easy, I, I don't say enjoyable, but it's never that we sat down in a meeting, we're like, oh God, here we gotta go again. Like, we sat down and kind of rolled our sleeves up, said we have to figure this out, but it was always, you know, congenial and cordial and cooperative and. And it is, we're, I, I know I'm lucky to have the team that we have. Um, you know, as you said, your, your people made us look good, you, you guys have made us look good too.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, um, this is probably the most difficult budget I've been involved with, the five years, I've had concerns over the past years about, especially last year. Us going in a negative direction. Uh, we did a lot of capital cuts last year. Uh. It wasn't enough, um. You know, the proper thing is to do is when you have generational projects that are capital projects to go out on a bond for them. Instead of depleting your cash, kind of, uh, fund balance. And that's the direction we're going in and that's the proper way to do it. Uh, and also looking at the cuts, you know, we have to. We have to, you know, these are, these are taxpayers' money, we do not want to raise taxes. That would be our last option, we've, we've made a commitment to that. You know, we've reduced it twenty-five percent. As you stated here this morning. And it's all the hard work of the county, employees, elected officials, your department. Uh, everybody coming to the table because we're a team here. There's no one individual, it's about a team effort. And with your department, uh, you know, IT with your department, all of the different departments came to the table. Expressed the concern going forward, uh, we, they understood it. And, and they did hard work with you. Nice thing going into the future is something that I stressed five years ago is to have quarterly reviews. We're there now, where we can do quarterly reviews. And be able to attract the monies even better. And so we want to thank you for implementing that.
Yep.
And getting to that point. And we look forward to next year. And, uh, and going in the right direction, I believe we're heading in the right direction.
Absolutely, and I got some, you know, I, I say good stuff, I'm not sure if the departments think it's good stuff, but, you know, better ways to, to look at the budget, uh, to approach it. Um, help them with budgeting, you know, we're gonna take a, really here at January, take a look at figuring out between mandated services and non-mandated services. So we can get a better view of how budgets are put together. Um, so that'll help us determine where cuts can come and where they can't and do better due diligence. So.
Thank you. Again, we want to thank all the employees, uh, department, elected officials also for working together as a team.
Absolutely, yep.
But we're excited there's no tax increase.
I'm excited too.
Yep. Okay. So we need a vote to approve. Uh, and adopt twenty twenty-five budget. I have a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I will second to approve the non-tax increase budget for twenty twenty-five.
Off their side.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then the next, um, item kind of goes hand in hand with the budgets, it's a bunch of resolutions that help solidify the budget. Um, the first resolution I have for you is the twenty twenty-four dash twenty-eight. Uh, again, it's the twenty twenty-five budget, operating budget.
Motion accept the twenty twenty-four dash twenty-eight. Resolution. I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
Off their side.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, the next resolution, twenty twenty-four dash twenty-nine, this is our three-year capital plan.
Motion to adopt resolution twenty-four, twenty twenty-four dash twenty-nine. I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
Off your side.
Aye.
And then the next one, twenty twenty-four dash thirty, uh, this is the real estate. And then the next one, twenty twenty four dash thirty. Uh, this is the real estate tax rate. Just going to be kept at six point five mils as a result of a no tax increase.
Okay, motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
And then the last resolution I have for you is twenty twenty four dash thirty one. That's for the ratio for the real estate tax assessment or made at a hundred percent.
Motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty one. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Okay, I'm moving forward, although it goes with the budget, it's not part of the budget process essentially. Um, this is resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty two. This is to approve a twenty twenty five tax anticipation revenue note.
A motion to adopt the resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty two.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All fair side.
Are any other ones that I have now?
Yeah, seven thirty, seven thirty nine are the same.
Yeah, so.
Seven point three three.
What was that? Yeah, so is it okay to do this while here as well?
Yeah, move back up to seven three two three.
So seven point three two, um, that's vote to approve the amendment to the agreement with Geo Reentry Services. That's to extend the agreement for an additional year.
Okay, motion, uh, I have motion.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Any questions or comments? We want to thank Geo for their services. And they're working with the county. All fair side.
A seven three, um, point three three, we've already discussed that, so we'll skip to seven point three four. Um, it's vote to approve the same.
Chris, Chris just got nervous. Can't take the check.
Alright, so this is just an amendment to the agreement with and um, within the Go Sports for a contract extension, as Chris stated.
A motion accepts. I'll make that. I'll second. And thank you for your services.
And what is, what's the extension timeframe, Maya?
It's a five year one.
And there's five years or three year options.
Two, three year options.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all fair side. Okay, seven point three four.
Yes, um, that's a vote to approve the save and maintenance and service agreement with PDAI. This is just a continual thing we have um with the district attorney's office um at the state level. They help offset some costs for. Beds that we have there.
Motion accept. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
The next item, I'm vote to approve the agreement with um Scottilla Psychological Services. Um, this is on an as needed basis. I think just one, I can't remember if it's with um district attorney or PD.
Okay, motion accept. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Fair side.
You thought it was gonna be a long meeting. We're all ready to go.
Alright, thank you, commissioners. Alright, Merry Christmas.
Merry holiday.
Thank you.
Alright, start the end and you clear out the room. Now you're up.
Hey, Monica.
You thought just because you were first on the list, you would go first.
I know.
What a crazy assumption that was.
Good morning, commissioners. Seven point one is just an action item, uh, vote to approve the CDBG for fiscal year twenty twenty two budget revision. Uh, and submission to the PA Department of Community and Economic Development with Montorsville Borough in the amount of one thousand eight hundred thirty seven. Dollars and thirty cents. So this has been previously approved. Um, I think that should be twenty point four, but that is twenty twenty or twenty twenty two. Uh, approved budget item, reallocation of CDBG for fiscal year twenty two funds for Montorsville curb cuts.
Okay, motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Any questions or comments? Are you in that all fair side?
Okay, and then seven point two is a vote to approve the CDBG for fiscal year twenty twenty three. Subrecipient agreement with Montorsville Borough in the amount of eighty eight thousand, two dollars and zero cents. For a uh, CDBG for fiscal year twenty twenty three funds for Montorsville curb cuts. That's the same project.
Any motion to accept? I'll make the motion. I'll second. Questions or comments? You're not all fair side.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Christine, you still with us?
Yes, I am.
Good morning. You didn't doze off or anything there, did you?
No, I didn't.
Good morning.
Alright, you got seven three.
Good morning. Um, seven point three is to approve the amendment to the subrecipient agreement with the Williamsport Municipal Water Authority. This amendment will just extend the termination date from December thirty first, twenty twenty four until December thirty first.
Okay, motion accept. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Are you in that all fair side?
Um, seven point four is a similar action. It is to approve a subrecipient agreement amendment with the Williamsport Sanitary Authority. To extend their ARPA agreements from December thirty first, twenty twenty four to December thirty first.
Okay, motion to accept.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Questions or comments? Are you in that all fair side?
The next agenda item is to approve the subrecipient agreement amendment with Montorsville Borough, also extending the termination date. From uh, December thirty first, twenty twenty four to December thirty first, twenty twenty five.
Okay, motion to accept. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Are you in that all fair side?
Seven point six is to approve the subrecipient agreement amendment, uh, it's an ARPA program again. Um, with the Lakecoming County Water and Sewer Authority for the Riverside Drive project. This will decrease the amount of their agreement uh to four hundred eighty five thousand. Nine hundred dollars. This is due to um, some uh, re-soping of the project and they no longer needed the full amount.
Motion to accept.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Are you in that all fair side?
The next uh, action item is to approve the subrecipient agreement amendment with Hughesville Wolf, uh, Hughesville Wolf Township. Joint Municipal Authority and this is to increase their um, ARPA agreement from four hundred five thousand, five hundred five dollars. Three cents to six hundred thousand, five hundred nineteen dollars and fifteen.
Okay, motion to accept.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All fair side.
The next action item is an interagency agreement for ARPA funds between the county and the county's Department of Public Safety. And this is for two separate projects um that are listed on page two of the agreement. And the first one is an emergency radio purchase in the amount of nine hundred fifty nine thousand, one hundred twenty three dollars and thirty seven cents. That was the acquisition of emergency ra- response equipment um and some ancillary accessories to that. And the second uh, component of this agreement is a flood warning system. We are allocating two hundred sixty five thousand, seven hundred ten dollars of ARPA funds. Towards the upgrade to the county's flood warning system. But this agreement is in the amount total of. One million, two hundred twenty four thousand, eight hundred thirty three dollars and thirty seven cents.
Okay, motion to accept.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All fair side.
And the last item on uh, for me is seven point nine, which is another ARPA amendment. The subrecipient agreement, this is also with Lakecoming County Water and Sewer Authority. This is to change their Armstrong Township inflow and infiltration project to the Armstrong Township generator project. Um, there's, we're just switching the two under, uh, sorry, twenty seven, twenty two thousand, seven hundred forty dollars between those two projects. So um, the inflow and infiltration project will now be the generator project.
You got a motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All fair side.
Alright, that was it for me on the ARPA action. So Merry Christmas, commissioners.
Tristan, before you go, Merry Christmas, uh, before you go, we want to thank you and the City College staff. Uh, for working with us in our planning department, our fiscal office, um, on all the ARPA monies over the last several years. Um, the twenty two million dollars that was allocated by the federal government, uh, the way we have allocated to the different municipalities. And the county throughout the uh, the course of those years, uh, we've spent them on generational projects. And uh, we just want to thank you for your guidance. Uh, you make sure that we get this thing done legally. And that every penny is accounted for. You and your staff down here, we want to thank you for your service.
I greatly appreciate that. I appreciate um, your willingness to work with me on that. Uh, it's been a couple of years worth of progress here, but uh, as of today. All twenty two million has been allocated to a project.
Thank you. And often when we have a question, we go to you because you're the expert.
I appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Have a great Christmas. Thank you.
And seven point ten through seven point twelve, Mark.
I know we never get to see Kristen. She's always on the phone because she's lives away. She's a pro. Like, she's really good at what she does. She is. And we are. We're fortunate to be able to work with her.
Yeah, those monies were not easy to spend.
No.
At all.
No.
Lot of red tape and they make sure the red tape's taken care of. She's really smart. She does a good job.
And so what what we'll do is we'll be transitioning to a monitoring now. Money's been allocated now, so the ten million that uh. That Kristen is involved, now the twelve million Kristen is involved, then we'll be all monitoring for the most part. And then also with what the planning department's been involved in, we'll be monitoring for the most part.
Yep. And I know the townships, the municipalities, they're all very appreciative of the monies because we couldn't do this without it. And they, they are all generational projects. They're projects that will help those residents, help keep the costs down. That they would probably had to raise taxes in those areas to get those jobs done. A lot of the attitude of infrastructure.
Right. And a lot of counties didn't give out money to other entities. A lot of counties did keep the money from themselves, so.
And we wanted to make sure that we were able to help all the residents of the county and uh, going forward, but I think we've accomplished that.
We should have a cheer. Um, Mark is under the weather, so I said I would take his items. Um, uh, seven point ten is vote to approve amendment number two with Kleinfelder Century Engineering for subdivision land development technical reviews. Um, this is this, an approved twenty twenty five. Budgeted item. Um, uh, what this does is when we get a subdivision land development that needs engineering review. Um, we send it to Century Engineering. They do the review. The cost of that review is paid for by the applicant. Um, we have very few fees that we actually pay out accounting funds to the engineer. Uh, this is generally a cost that's, that's almost entirely, if not entirely, paid for by the applicant. Uh, and uh, we will be going out for new quotes in twenty twenty five.
Motion to accept. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Eight, seven eleven, vote to approve the agreement with Jill Fry, Fry for stenography services. Um. This is all for approved budgeted item. Um, and seven twelve is also. Vote to approve the agreement with Don Swilly for stenography services so that we have a backup. Um, we actually did, uh, Mike asked us to see if we could get some quotes to make sure that we were, we were uh, in line with. Um. What they were charging and they are the two cheapest uh, stenographers. Um, and once again, we, we do pay for part of the stenographer's cost when we go to zoning hearing boards. But the other part is paid for by the applicant. And we'll, we'll revisit how that percentage of payment in the new year when we, when we revisit our uh, permit fees.
Thank you. I have motion accept. Action item seven point eleven, seven point twelve. I will make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Lee, morning.
Action item seven point one three, seeking your approval for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four fair subrecipient agreement with Step Inc. For their supportive housing program in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars. It's a twenty twenty four budgeted item.
Okay, motion to accept. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Seven point one four, seeking your approval for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four fair subrecipient agreement with Step Inc. In the amount of fifty thousand dollars. This is a twenty twenty four approved budgeted item.
Okay, motion accept. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
I.
I.
Seven point one five, seeking your approval for twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four fair subrecipient agreement with Step Inc. The mass releasing program in the amount of four hundred fifty thousand dollars. Also a twenty twenty four approved budgeted item.
Okay, uh, motion to accept.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All fair side.
Seven point one six, seeking your approval for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four fair subrecipient agreement with Step Inc. Home to Need Program in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars.
Motion to accept. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I'd just like to make a comment. Uh, Step is uh, changing their. Leadership at this time, uh, Jim, Jim Plankenhorn, who's been a tremendous asset for Step is retiring. We wish him well in his retirement. And uh, Rochelle Abbott is now got to be uh, in charge up there. She's excellent, excellent leader. We look forward to uh, working with Rochelle and her staff in the future. So, with that said, uh. Motion and a second, all fair side.
Action item seven point one seven, seeking your approval for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four fair subrecipient agreement with the Greater Lakecoming. Habitat for Humanity for the Scott Street Project in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, motion to accept. I'll make the motion. I'm sorry.
I'll second.
Second, all fair side.
Action item seven point one eight, seeking your approval for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four fair subrecipient agreement with the Greater Lakecoming. Habitat for Humanity Home Preservation Program in the amount of twenty five thousand dollars.
Uh, motion to accept. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. And, good morning.
Oh, you got a bunch.
You got a bunch, Ken.
You can tell Ken needs attention.
Yeah.
Got ten in a row.
Hey, commissioners, um, before you, seven point nine through seven point two three. Um, is amendments to the contract for the controllers build. And what they are, it's um, extending the contract thirteen days for the, the prime contractor.
Orders built.
Yes.
Controllers.
What's that?
You said the controller.
Oh, I'm sorry, corners. Yes, I'm sorry.
I said, what is the controller? Orders built. So they change orders for.
It's just a thirteen days of, of extension.
Alright, uh, is it okay to do this as a slate?
Okay.
Okay, so, motion accept, seven point one nine, seven point two oh, seven point two one. Seven point two two and seven point two three, uh, for change, uh, orders as a slate.
Yeah, I'll make that move. I'll second.
All fair side.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, seven point two four is an agreement with Hunter Namison to uh, for the maintenance. On all our generators, about the county, as far as uh, the ones that the maintenance department takes care of.
Okay, motion to accept.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Okay, seven point two five is with Icon Fire Solutions, which does our sprinkler systems. Uh, the first one here is, um, we need to relocate a valve on the first floor and third street plaza. Um, the valve, the test valve is not accessible at this point.
Okay, uh, motion to accept.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Any questions or comments on that? All fair side.
And next one, seven point two six is also with Icon Fire. Um, it's to make repairs to our fire pump. Which services all the sprinkler heads. It has a packing that's leaking. Um, and the pump needs to be pulled, um, taken apart and new packing put in.
That's for the building here.
Yes.
Okay. Motion to accept. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Okay, um, seven point two seven is also with Icon Fire. Um, it's to replace the relief. Uh, pressure valve on, on the pumping system. Which is not operating.
Okay, motion to accept. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Seven point two eight is an agreement with Eminem Asphalt to remove snow. Um, if we get a snowfall and we have to pile it up in the parking lots, um, they come and remove for us.
So that we don't get those kinds.
Yeah, I'm praying. Yeah, I'm praying, yeah, we'll stay just where we are and make it a little warmer and we'll be good.
Yeah. Motion to accept, I'll make the motion.
A second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Don't we need snow for the water table? I like plenty of water.
Thank you.
Always. Buffalo.
Leslie.
More Leslie.
Good morning commissioners, good morning Matt. Um, seven point two nine, um seeking your approval um for our software um from Zoho Corporation. Um basically, this will be our threat detect, detection, event logging, um account lockouts, um security, if you will. Um just to make sure that no one's getting into our network that's not supposed to.
Okay, motion to accept, I'll make the motion.
A second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, four or seven point three zero, um this is just our software renewal with advantage software for our court reporter software, um this does the maintenance for them in the amount of four thousand five hundred and fifty four dollars, and it is an improved um budget.
Okay, motion to accept, I'll make the motion.
A second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Um, last commissioner is seven point three one, um seeking your approval to renew the Melillo contract um for uh managed services in the amount of two hundred thousand a hundred and seventy two dollars, and this is in our twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
A second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you commissioners, Merry Christmas.
Uh, seven point four is your commissioner seeking your approval the appointment of the following individuals to the CEDOCO Board of Directors. Commissioner Scott L. Metzger. And Commissioner Representative Howard Frye is the county's second representative member in large.
I should tell me you're getting compensated rightly for this.
No. Okay, motion to accept, I'll make the motion.
Second.
All fair side?
Aye.
And lastly, seven point four one, commissioner seeking your approval on the reaportment, reappointment of the following individuals Lakecoming County Library System for a period of three years effective one one twenty twenty five and ending on twelve thirty one twenty twenty seven. Christie Foresman, Hughesville Area Library. Ben Brigandi, member in large. Shipman, member in large.
Okay, motion to accept.
I'll make the motion, I'll say.
All fair side?
Aye.
I'd like to thank uh the different members that are step forward to uh serve on the library board, and also Howard Frye, uh Howie uh has served many years on CEDOCO, served as their secretary on the uh, uh the board, and we want to thank these individuals for the service and uh so appreciate your bonus to help out the public.
Yes, it's certainly, these people are, this is their way of giving back to the community, and it is, it is appreciative, appreciated, and it is necessary.
And, and uh Howie's also a township supervisor, so he is back township supervisor also. And I believe uh which township it is?
Gamble.
Gamble. Commissioner comments? Um, yeah, it's, you remind me started, I would uh you know, we're, we are one year into uh my first term here, and uh I, I think we've accomplished a lot, I'd like to thank my colleagues, uh I, I've enjoyed working with both of them. Uh we've, we've made a lot of hard decisions, we've made a lot of changes. I don't, I don't think we're done, I think we've got a lot to do in twenty twenty five as well. But uh it's been a pleasure working with everybody here at the county. Um, I'm, I'm proud of the steps that we've made and the direction we've gone. I think we have the county going on the right track. Obviously, it's, it's a team of all the people, but the three of us making those final decisions, so I appreciate uh the work from both you guys and didn't know either one of you really before this, so I've enjoyed the friendship and relationship. As well as our director. I've been a new Matt a little bit, that's township supervisor, but you know. It's different when you work with somebody every day, so, so I appreciate, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I, I think a year in, the most, um the most surprising thing to me is the people. Uh how, how enjoyable it is and how we have really good people. Um, we have really friendly people who have been welcoming to both Mark and I. Um because we're, you know, outsiders coming into government world, and you know, a lot of times you hear about government being lazy and um all this, we have really smart people here. We have some really dedicated people here uh who could be certainly making more money in, in the private sector if they really, if they really wanted to, but um they're kind of dedicated to community service. And um, but just, you know, at any job, we've all had different jobs, at any job uh the, the quality and the enjoyment of the job isn't really necessarily the work that you're doing, it's the people that you're doing it with. And um, if you've got that, that team atmosphere that you enjoy coming to work every day, then doing the work is so much easier. And I am, um, you know, something that we didn't do, we're just fortunate that we kind of fell into a, into a good group of people. And, and I echo what Mark says, I, I, when these guys call uh at night or when they text or I, I never look at the phone and think, oh geez. You know, when they call, I pick up the phone, um we show up in the morning to work, we're, we're ready to go. And there's no, um I'm not going to a meeting if he's in it because I'm, you know, there's no animosity, we have, we haven't had harsh work in twelve months. Um, it's uh, except maybe the Yankees Mets, there might have been a little friction there, but that's probably about it, so um yeah, it's, well, the, the loyal side, well, that goes without saying, we don't even talk about that. But no, it's been, and, and, and I, I know how fortunate I am, because again, we've all had jobs and it's, it's not always like that. You don't always have coworkers like this, and, and art from all the way down. Um we just, on a day in and day out basis, most of the people we deal with are really, really wonderful to work with, and we're lucky.
Thank you. So, um we're blessed to have dedicated people working in this county. And uh and sincerely care about what they do. In any organization, their success is based on the people running things every day. You're only as good as the people around you. And our success is based on the people around us. And they do a great job, and we appreciate your service, and we thank them. Um, it's been a pleasure working with you two. Anything's done, we're heading in the right direction. Good thing, thank you Matt for your service. And uh we look forward to the next three years. We have much more to do. And uh streamlining things even more efficiently. Uh so we just want to thank everybody. Um, this is, this is a board of commissioners. Uh one, one individual ever has been. And I learned something, I shared with my two colleagues. And when somebody asks me a question, we make a decision as a group. We don't always agree. But uh we make a decision as a group. And it'll always be a board of commissioners. And it's always be a team effort from the county. Uh that's what we look forward to. No one person has all the answers. So it's great to have insight from individuals that have that expertise, or just to listen to their opinion. Uh have an open mind. Think independently, but to come to a, an agreement in the long run. That's what we strive to do as a board, and we'll continue to strive that way, work as a team. It's been a pleasure, look forward to twenty twenty five, uh working together as a team in the county and getting things done for our residents. So I appreciate both of you.
I, I think, I think that is important to echo, you know, Scott um has the most experience here as a commissioner, it's his second term. And he also has the most experience through the county. So if there was anyone in a position to be like, well, I'll just handle this myself and, you know, I'll, I'll talk to you guys on a need to know basis. You know, he, he could come at it from that position, but he never has. He is, he is one of three, he shows everything we have, we discuss things equally. So he has never pulled any, you know, hierarchy cards of like, I'm, I've, I'm more experienced, I know more, even though he is, and he does. He's never played that card, and he has treated Mark and I um as equals from day one. And um, it, it's been appreciated because I know not in every fast, not, not everyone in your position would have handled it that way. We're thankful for that. And I think we should also mention, our solicitors are even tolerable. I mean, you talk about nice people, I don't know, that's so, that's, that's.
A little expensive, but they're tolerant.
A little expensive, yeah, yeah, but they're tolerable, so we'll.
They're very appreciative.
Thank you.
Okay. Public comment?
I've got uh three online.
Okay.
This is from Lakecoming, you heard? You heard. Commissioner Swordman, that suit is revolutionary.
I, I, I wanted to make the comment while he was here and he left, I was just trying to keep up with our HR director, it was always oh.
I tried to be a little festive.
Yeah, as well.
He is always.
Definitely would have had you guys be today, but it just, the pants were too. Um.
But thank you.
Tom Sad. Merry Christmas, live to Lakecoming County, I hope to be in meetings. Person again, our county is special, thank you for your work, commissioner.
Thank you, Tom, we have missed you.
Thank you.
In person.
That's it.
That's it. Well, we want to share, wish everybody Merry Christmas and a Happy Hanukkah. Best wishes for twenty twenty five, we do not have a meeting next week. Um, stay after Christmas, and we will be back here the day after New Year's on January second, ten AM. Look forward to uh service in the constituents in twenty twenty five, thank you everybody.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Later, agendas will be adjourned.